Good morning, and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission. This is July 1st, Thursday, July 3rd, 2021. It's now 3:00 a.m. We'd like to start off by saying, please, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the approval of amendments between 17.21, you don't have any objections?
I have a question. Page five, item number four, we have public hearing and decision. And I believe the motion is made on that. It's about the amendment to the impact to procedures ordinance. Item number four. There was an amendment on that. I know, but it's not in this. Okay. So we need to add this. Yes, definitely.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying. Yeah, you're exactly right. We'll certainly have to go back and make a motion. But I know it's unanimous decision. I do have an amendment.
Okay, let's, yeah.
Okay. Other than the one change to gen item number four from the last meeting, if there are no other objections, the amendments are approved as submitted. We'll make that change in that sentence. Approval of requisition July 1st, 2021, for the amount of $5,070. If there are no objections, that is approved for approval accounts payable on June 24th, 2021, for the amount of $972,381.44. If there are no objections, that is approved for accounts payable for July 1st, 2021, for the amount of $8,337.75. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval manual checks on June 25th, 2021, for the amount of $2,106,410.50. If there are no objections, that is approved. July 2nd, 2021, you don't have any manual checks. Approval payroll for June 24th, 2021, the amount of $260,698.8. If there are no objections, that is approved. All right, we're going to move on to agenda number one. Angie Banks, Assessor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I have one exoneration. It is in our personal property book for 2020, Harper's Ferry District. KLC Transport did not own the 2018 Chevy Silverado, July 1st, 2019. The assessed value is $30,000. Tax amount is $682.80 for the full year. Ticket number 308149.
Thank you. I'll move that we accept the exoneration as submitted by Angie Banks or Assessor. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and I'll also add the ticket number is 30149.
Any discussion? All favors are opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Agenda item number two, Matt Harvey, prosecutor attorney, discussed staffing needs and requests approval to hire a new employee. Is Matt online?
Let me make sure he's on. I don't think he's online yet. And sometimes he usually comes in too.
He's on his way. You see him coming in? You're up, sir. You're up, Matt. Come on and have a seat. Perfect time. Actually, you're about to leave.
I was on the schedule for nine-four. So early.
All right, go ahead, sir.
I'm here to have a young man named Jamin Branch hired as an assistant prosecutor attorney in my office. This is a replacement. We had a assistant prosecutor leave, move to Florida, take employment down there. And his, this is budget neutral. It's actually would save a little less than $500 between his start salary and what she left at.
Okay. What was his name again?
His name is Jamin Branson, J-A-M-I-N. And he actually did two, two, two years of, he worked in our office as an intern for two years. He volunteered to do that, so he should probably have been backstage. But no, he actually, he did a fantastic job. Since those two summers, I had him in my mind if I ever had a spot open up. And this was perfect because he'll be coming in to match for. He's had a couple of years working for legal aid. Has really strong legal writing and argument skills as an intern. So I think this is just a continuation of the quality attorneys that we have in our office. And I think he'll represent my office in this county very well. He's from the other side of the state. And he got here via Shepherd University and then graduated law school from Liberty. And he married a local girl. He's, he's stuck.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, he's a winner. He's here.
He is, no, he's, yeah, no, he's, he chose this. But no, his wife's.
Okay, so what's the start date and salary?
It'd be July 26th, is it would be his start date, and his salary is 67.5.
Okay. I'll move a motion to accept a new hire, Jamin Branch, and start date July 26th for 67,500. You have a second?
Same.
I think, any discussions? All favors are aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, sir. I know we're running a little bit. I'll just give you a hard time.
I tried to call in on that webinar, and it doesn't work. The link, that's why. And I called in on the, the phone as well. It was dead air.
Maybe we have, sir. Did you do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, she hadn't turned it on yet.
Okay. Okay, good.
All right. I don't see Dennis. Is Lynn online?
Dennis is on.
Oh, Dennis is on line. Okay, go ahead, Dennis. Agenda item number three, I thought he's coming in person. Dennis Jarvis, Jefferson County, double authority request permission to advertise for the position of project manager. Go ahead, sir. The floor is yours.
You're so muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Well, I was coming in person, but we have, thanks to technology, I can move forward and be a great county ambassador at the same time. But we would like to, we're seeking permission to advertise a position that was in the office. Lynn Goodwin was our program manager. And she had moved on in April. And we did reassessment of the strategic plan and operations in the office. And we would like to ask approval to re-advertise the position. And it's budget neutral. The money was in the current FY, last FY and new FY. We're not asking for a pay increase or any other amenities.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Dennis? If not, I'll deal with, go ahead.
I just have one question because the agenda request indicated that the project, the title was changing from program manager to project manager. And we currently have a project manager job description, and I think it would create an internal equity problem with our position control. So I just wanted to confirm what title you wanted to make this.
For clarification, I apologize. I made the error. I did not, I didn't talk to you about that before. Stephanie, I spoke off, off camera via text. That was semantics, and I apologize for creating confusion. We're not asking for a change in the job. I apologize about that.
Okay. All right, good deal. Well, I'll go ahead and move to approve the advertised position, program manager for the Jefferson County double authority. You have a second?
Same.
Any discussion? All favors are aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You asked, you asked, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes, sir, y'all take care.
We'll move on to this Lynn. This Lynn online? All right, we're going to go to Lynn Fields, a probate officer.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're here from, or, excuse me, I'm here from the county clerk's office with the probate office to present a list of accounts and waivers that have met all of the deadlines and requirements of our office and that need your official approval to be closed.
We don't have them here. We have, there was, yes. Yeah.
All right. Do we typically in the past, we do a discussion for each one?
You need to convene as a fiduciary review board.
I move we convene as a fiduciary review board.
Same.
All favors are aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
And then you just review them then.
Do we, do we, in the past, do we just review each one? Do we make a motion for each one or for the whole slate?
If you want to approve the whole slate, you can just like, you can.
Okay.
But usually when we've called in person, we get piles of these states' paperwork, and we pass it around, and everybody can have a chance to review. You know, several of them. Unfortunately, it's getting, so I know more people on this post. So I'll make the motion that we approve all the states that have been open since the last quarter we reviewed and close all the states that have met the requirement of appropriate office.
Same. The motion has been properly moved. The second is in discussion. All favors are aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You asked unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Do we move back out?
Yes. Make the motion back into regular session.
Same. Favors are aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You asked. Thank you. All right, we're slightly ahead. We want to jump to, we have interviews next. We probably should wait a little bit, I think. Would you want to rethink something? You want to go ahead? This, we have plenty of time. You want to go ahead and move to ten?
Sure.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move to agenda item number 10. This is something I asked to put on the agenda. Shubs here, ready? This is discussion on ARP stipend and FY 2022 merit increase cost of living adjustments. I put this on the agenda as y'all know, and in the budget. We have not received the ARP money yet. And we did not do a cost of living rate for merit and FY 22. We also have the, the ability to, to pay stipends to some of our employees, I believe. Or is there certain?
Well, there would be a certain group, and if you want, I can kind of go over that.
Okay.
So the American Rescue Plan Act permits, they have, permits all counties to offer additional compensation up to $13 per hour in additional wages for county employees who have faced and continue to face the greatest outbreaks due to the surge of pandemic. Those funds can be paid retroactively to January 27, 2020. So during the June 23rd special session, SAKD requested the commission consider a gross payment of $3,000 to all full-time regular employees as a retroactive payment for that premium that is allowable to be paid as a one-time payment out of the American Rescue Plan Funds. During the pandemic, all county employees were deemed to be essential staffing to ensure continuity of operations. And due to the revenue loss that resulted from the pandemic, the county, as of this point, had not been able to recognize the extraordinary work their employees and component unit employees performed in potential health risks that they were actually exposed to. They packet, I sent it out to you, did include some examples. Our election staff were exposed to tens of thousands of residents while performing to elections related to a presidential election year. Our deputies in the sheriff's office, employees of the health department, and our medical technicians at ESA. They were our frontline public safety employees, and they were exposed to thousands of in-person contacts while performing their duties. Maintenance staff, they were also exposed to bodily fluids while performing their health, their duties to clean and sanitize not only work areas before and after we had positive COVID case exposures, but the public, community areas that our public would go through. Additionally, staff in our assessor's office, departments, and all of our departments were exposed to residents and commercial businesses during the course of their, doing their duties, whether they be here in the office or out in the field performing those duties. The proposal was that a one-time premium pay retroactive payment would be provided to employees who meet certain criteria. The criteria that I modeled based on criteria that was established for the city of Hagerstown when they introduced their premium pay was that the coverage period be employees who worked from January 27, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. They must be a full-time employee. They must have physically been at work, meaning that they couldn't have been telelooking that entire time, whole time. So they must have been physically at work, physically exposed to a public health risk, a minimum of 30 days during that covered period. They must be an active employer currently employed as of June 23rd, which is the date I introduced it. We can change that date to today or some other date in the future. It does exclude any full-time employees that have left employment during this period. That would be from January 27, 2020, to that date that we determine. I have June 23rd listed in here. And it would exclude any full-time employees, I'm sorry. It would also include any employees who retired and are eligible for rehire. It would exclude full-time employees that have taken the resignation prior to that June 23rd date, or if we change that date, it will also change. Now, during the coverage period, some employees didn't work remotely for short periods, but I wanted to make sure that we provided this to employees who worked at minimum of 30, you know, business days. So that's about six weeks during the COVID period. Total county count, we have 160 employees. We have 32 deputies, 125 regular employees. And I believe we have three retirees that would be eligible. And I also wanted to point out that during the June 23rd presentation, the sheriff's department did request additional compensation for deputies of 7,500 instead of 3,000. So the total cost, based on those criteria, we have about 160 retirees and employees eligible. So the total cost would be 180,000 plus benefits for a total of 567,000. The original ARP request was 860,000, so it's just under that. The original request included all employees, just as a ballpark number. So once we narrowed it down, based on those criteria, the number decreased. Component units, I did reach out to them. The number of employees that we have at ESA is 35. We have one admin there, one retiree, and then 33 EMS or EMTs that would be eligible. And the total cost of that $3,000 amount would be 124,000. For Parks and Rec, we had five employees that would be eligible. They maintained all of our summer rec programs. They had public interaction with not only children, but adults. They had an influx of people visiting the parks as well. They also needed to clean and sanitize all of the parks and playground equipment on a regular basis. So the total cost for those five employees would be about 17,648. Then, of course, our health department has been the public base for the pandemic for the county throughout the entire pandemic. And during the vaccination clinics, those employees have been exposed to bodily fluids, you know, getting shots to actual employees. All of our sanitarians perform, continue to perform their duties. And they actually, I believe, were the employees who actually investigated complaints, you know, within the public for exposures to COVID tracing, things like that. So the total cost for the health department, for the nine employees that they indicated were eligible, would be 31,766. So grand total for all employees and public units would be 741,326. The original request was 1,040,000. So there are savings of about 298,000. Because this does qualify for American Rescue Plan Act funding, I would recommend that we pay for this directly out of the American Rescue Plan Act.
Okay. Go ahead.
Oh, on that recommendation.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at this. We still have public comment open for another week of our funding requests. I would like to table this until we look at everything that's been submitted and know what we're up against. So I don't, I'm not against it. I'm not saying that. I just would like to look at it and see where the chips fall once all the requests have been submitted. We had the broadband meeting yesterday. We haven't had members in for that yet. So I would like to look at that. I do think that the first responders and everybody that was out in exposure, that there should be some sort of compensation or hazard pay, if you will, for keeping things running and responding call duty and all that. But I just think we table this until we get everything in, and then we make the decisions and how we're going to disperse those funds at one time.
My question, and I'm sure you've read the whole document guidelines, because, you know, in my understanding, health department are actually state employees. So you'll know they're served Jefferson County. So I don't know where the lines fly. I mean, would they possibly get hazard pay from the state too? That's where I'm coming from, if they double up.
So they're not on the state payroll, so if this.
They're not.
No, they have to follow the state, so they're weird. I mean, because they're on the state quasi-county, but they run their own payroll. So if the state were to give the statement, I do not believe that the health companies would get that.
Okay.
But it's, and then they have to follow the state personnel guidelines.
I just want to make sure there could be any double dipping. Not that anyone doesn't deserve it, but, and you know, the ESA, you know, paid out of ESA, you know, they're not our direct employees. But no, that's good if we know there can't be any double dipping. That's what I.
The health department is in very unusual cases.
Yeah, yeah.
It has, you have elements of state offensive. And it makes it confusing sometimes to.
Right, because I always heard, you know, the state paid level was not enough. In that area, you trust anybody, so I assume they were.
Well, they follow the state guidelines, but they get money from the county.
Yeah.
That, it's strange.
Yes, it is strange. Okay.
If we're looking at an enhancement for public safety, you know, versus where we're going to get more in public safety, I would like for you to think about the county clerk's office and the elections department in giving them that safe enhancement. And I don't, I think everyone in that office actually ended up working the commission, but they had a lot of public contact or, I mean, anyone who voted.
I agree. I think we should table it until we're making the decision on all the funds, so we can take a good look at what we can do and how we're going to do that.
I think we kind of, you know, we're saying, okay, public safety was responding, but I didn't want you to forget about, ladies who probably fought in a pandemic, they wouldn't have the extent of that public contact, but they, oh, they did.
No, I appreciate all the numbers. Also, put on here for the merit and COLA. And didn't know what, I just wanted to have an open discussion and to see what the commissioners wanted to do now that we received the ARPA monies. Can we backfill some of our losses?
Well, actually, ARP A monies can't be used directly to fund the COLA or the merit increases. So the ARP A monies are really just funding for us to help bridge the gap until the economy recovers and our lost revenue recovers. When we developed the budget back in January, and we developed our revenue projections for gambling revenue, it was based on a lot of uncertainties regarding gambling revenue. So the pandemic has been around for about 18 months now. So we have two full fiscal years now of pandemic revenues for gambling revenues. The first year that we had revenue loss in gambling revenues, we dropped from 3.6 million down to 2.9 million. So when I developed the revenue projections for fiscal year 22's budget, I anticipated that we would probably have the same type of drop for fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22, and we did not. For fiscal year 21, our revenue stayed flat between fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. So fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, we both, both year, we had 2.9 million because we had had so much uncertainty with the pandemic. And we didn't know if businesses were going to open, if Xena was going to be open at full capacity. We budgeted a very conservatively low number for fiscal year 22, 2.4 million. That number needs to be revised to 2.9 or even probably 3.2 million. When I look at the last quarter of fiscal year 21, it's still below our pre-pandemic gambling revenue, but it's coming up. It's about 10% lower than what it was prior to the pandemic. So this, this request really isn't dependent on ARP, ARPA funding. This request to me is centered around the fact that we have a change in the revenue projection for fiscal year 22 for our gambling revenues. And, you know, if we need to table it until we have additional requests for the ARP A, that's fine. If we wanted to discuss it today and flesh it out, that's fine as well. I just, I just wanted to point out that this, this request is dependent on the fact that revenue projections have changed and that we had two full years of pandemic revenue trend, historical trend for gambling revenue. And that estimate for fiscal year 22, it's about 500,000 or 600,000 to go.
I have some comments just on this. It's still, and I appreciate your projections and all of that, but it's still like estimates and projections. We really haven't given the, the revenue or the economy an opportunity to bounce back. So I just, revenues are still unstable. There's no guarantee that we're going to have another pandemic around the corner. I just don't think that it's something that I can support right now with the instability. I do appreciate all the accounting employees, but I'll go back to my original statement when we were doing budgeting. I mean, we didn't have to lay anybody off, or you weren't reduced with your, you know, salaries and those sort of things. I just, I just can't support something that's based on an injection of money to bring us up to a bridge of gap in our general revenues that can't be sustained moving forward. So I would like to know that we could sustain COLAs and merit increases on the revenues coming in, that's certain on paper before spending that type of money. I just think it'd be irresponsible to do that. I wouldn't want to have to turn around and we find out we have revenue shortfalls later and have to lay employees off because we can't be paid well or cut essential services because we can't be paid.
Well, Commissioner Jackson, I understand your concerns. And as somebody, I think you're in a similar position being self-employed. You know, if you don't make it, you don't have a salary. You know, you don't have any take-home pay. And I've, I've been that way most of my life. But I have come to learn over my years as a commissioner that we start losing people. I mean, they, you know, the economy does bounce back. People are going to be looking for bigger, better opportunities. And we're going to lose a lot of employees with institutional knowledge and, and training that is very hard to replace. So while the, the other funding, you know, I do think we need to look at the whole picture for that. I really, really want to go ahead and do these merit keep increases and cost of living adjustments now. Just the knowledge I have of what's going on at the race track. They are coming back, maybe not as many live races as the horsemen want, but people have really turned to online betting. You know, it's another form of entertainment and so forth. So I think the gambling revenues are notching up. And I feel comfortable with going ahead with the merit increases on the COLAs. That's where I'm at.
And then we basically backfilled from the ARP up to eight bucks for all the revenue spread.
Correct.
Okay.
And this additional revenue from the budget revision that we needed in fiscal year 22 is not included in that 1 million. So it's an additional 400,000 to 500,000. I wouldn't recommend going with 3.2 million, but I believe we could go definitely to 2.9 million, which would be the same amount that we received in 2021.
I just think it's a risk, and I think it's irresponsible. I just think it's risky and I think it's irresponsible for us to spend the money before we can actually rely on it.
We do that for you, actually. It's all, you know, our best guess, and that's, that's what we have to go on. We know at one time.
We've cut some money to fire departments and other things that serve the whole county.
And there would be additional funding, we only need two hundred and seventy-five thousand for merit increases and colas. I would recommend increasing the budget for gambling revenue from two point four eight to two point nine. That's, that's one of the.
So, I mean, there's a variant out there right now, apparently, we would not be up against another pandemic by the end of the year. And things would be shut down, so then there would be. So are we willing to take that risk and let county employees off or? I mean, I think you've got to weigh the odds, I just think it's very unstable right now, and I just don't think it's something that, that's my opinion, I just, I think it's too risky.
Well, and I understand none of us have a crystal, and nothing's, you know, solid. But I think with all the requests that we're getting in for the other money, you know, the, you know, I don't know if we can do the hazard pay, but we'll see what all our requests are. I mean, I'm certainly committed to broadband and that can have a pretty big price tag if we do everything we want to do to fix things. And that got value to all our.
To the point of the hazard payer to stipend, that's a one-time payout on a one-time injection of funding that we just suddenly got. You're talking about merit and cola increases that have to be sustained and then increases on top that have to be sustained well beyond when, I mean, we just don't have evidence that we're able to do that.
Historical trend that we showed, that we have looked at already shows that we have revenue increases of three and a half percent every year. And that's what the revenue projections are based on every year is that historical trend. So tax, property tax revenue increases an average of four to five hundred thousand annually. And the reduction that we saw in gambling revenue was not experienced again in fiscal year twenty-one.
I just would like to see a rebound to where we're back to those increases before we decide to commit to something that's going to be sustainable.
I understand your, your concerns, but I also have concerns on employee level service. So I'm going to make the motion that we implement fiscal year twenty-two merit increases and cost of living adjustments.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? Okay, motion, the motion will fail. I do, I do feel like it is very important that we do take care of our employees too. I think we, it's something we need to do and with, I think, Commissioner Jackson made a good point about this new variant and stuff, everything could turn out bad. And we don't know what's, I understand you won't have the crystal ball, we'll really tell. But what I would like to do is to revisit this and say January first.
So maybe December or January the first implementation.
Yes, and, and we can visit, the fiscal year starts today, so let's visit it six months down the road here and.
Six months of revenue trends.
We'll have six, four months of revenue trend, and I think that'll be a better, probably a better time to visit it and maybe make a more sound decision then, so.
So two years is better than eighteen months.
Yeah, and I am clear before this stipend, I would input that on there too, but I understand if you want to wait. I just want the, all the first responders to know that I am one hundred percent behind that. And I guess once we wait, once we get the rest of the recommendations in, we'll certainly revisit that as soon as possible.
I'm just want you, I understand your projections and estimates, it's no, nothing like that, it's just the uncertainty. If I am taking the pandemic and we don't have one side of our corners, I'd have a little more comfort in that this happens.
Or we're stable.
Okay, we're going to move on to, we'll just go ahead and discuss agenda item number eleven. This is a LEDA grant application. And basically what this is, is a, is a grant that Patricia Rucker has presented to us. And what she wants to do is, is to have a study of work in an aquatic center. She goes down to Charleston. And basically, she's asked us, we would match funds up to twenty-five percent. So the, the study could cost up to, up to fifty thousand dollars. If we, if we pay your worst case, we're, we matched, matched funds, I believe, I did break my head, it's like twelve five, I think. So this, talking to Senator Rucker, as you know, when she campaigns, she goes door to door. And this was the one thing that most people, when she was ordered off in this last election cycle, they'd want here in the county is a, is a a nice aquatic center, like the type of pool that has mushrooms and the buckets and the zero, zero entry type of.
A water park.
So, so this is a study, to study it, to maybe do a design. Obviously, this is just the first step. And basically, just wanted to go and get the commission's thoughts on this and see if y'all will support this, if you want to.
Well, I'd like to know what LEDA stands for. And also, I do think we should pull Parks and Rec into this, I mean, that's their, that's their thing.
I've already, I have talked to Jennifer Myers and I have a meeting with her next week as well too. I'll talk to her a little bit more about this.
Well, I'd like to hear from their board if this is something they want to pursue too, because it needs to fit in with their platform.
What she said, they had talked about it, and she doesn't know if it's something to do out, for them to have a water park at facility in San Michael's or maybe we talk to Charlestown and have them do something jointly, that was her recommendation. So this is just a study to put it together. Kind of get the costs, if the costs become back, so I would.
Well, I, I know, and I'm in favor of doing something, but I just want to make sure we don't.
I was just going to say that the LEDA stands for the Local Economic Development Grant, so that's what that would be. But I, I do think a possible idea that we can save money is to look into Charlestown and what we could do there to possibly build upon the existing facilities rather than a brand new project.
I agree.
That old pool at Charlestown is just a money pit and, you know, my girls are on the swim team there. They're up when you go to other facilities and see, but this sounds like more a water park, which is also needed for the young kids too. So we need a competition pool and also a fun.
I agree, if you go to Franklin Park over in Loudoun County, took my kids there two weeks ago. Basically, kind of, I think it's kind of what the mindset is and to build, so something like that. And they have a lap pool or a lap competition.
Right.
You can lap over there and also a water park. So, I mean, I certainly don't have a problem with doing the study, that's, that's how we get it started, maybe to support something. It's just, we need to start and get a design, I think this is what this grant, like. If, what I would like to do is just go ahead and do a motion to, to have matching funds. I don't like the people wide open, just a flat twenty-five percent, or I would say twenty-five percent or up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars to match, to match this LEDA grant applications for the funding sources for water and aquatic center. Do we have a second?
Where's the one come from?
I would say either Pool Severance or Capital, I'll recommend.
Okay, and the funds, I might not interrupt my motion if the funds come from Pool Severance, thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries your answer, thank you.
Well, and I, I just want to bring Parks and Rec Board into the loop too. Rep on that board, yeah. You don't want them to take the new ring behind your hat.
And, all right, we are. We're moving, we're ahead of schedule.
We have Becky and Joe who could do number six.
Then you go back to your office. So we're going to move on to agenda number six, Ronan Duvan Engineering, Complete Construction Bond Release for Shenandoah Valley Holdings LLC. And Devil's Dew Distillery Bird Industrial Park Lot thirty-two, File twenty dash two dash S P. What is yours?
You stated it well, we are asking that the bond be completely released, all of the work under the approved site plan has been completed in accordance with the site plan. Mr. Kim has done, done the site inspections for that project and determined that everything has been done in accordance with the approved site plan. So they're asking for a complete release of that construction.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the complete release of the remaining eighty-six thousand and thirty-six dollars from the construction bond for Shenandoah Valley Holdings LLC Devil's Dew Distillery for Business Park Lot thirty-two, File number twenty dash two dash. S five or S P.
S P.
Okay.
Second that, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries your answer.
Mr. Saltford, that's bothering you for your signature?
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'd like y'all to have a nice score.
Mr. Harris is here and Mr. Troxel submitted, he's going to be on the two.
Okay.
If you were, I don't know if everybody's.
What is, we have, we have five minutes, we can move on, it's Jeff on line? He's not, okay. Is, is Tony coming?
No, Tony's, he submitted yesterday that he can't, he's working.
Right.
Okay.
He submitted earlier.
All right, well, we'll do that, we'll go ahead and start our interviews and appointments, we'll go ahead and start with Jefferson Emergency Services Agency. And our two, two, three-year citizens, citizens representing parents ending June third, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Harris is here, I'll ask you to come on up, sir. And I'm just going to ask you, whoa, hold on there, I think I'm getting away from. I'll go ahead and ask you a second question, first, why do you want to be on the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency?
No, sure, it's a, it's, it's a good bit for my background. My understanding of it, it's functioning is almost an HR function for, you know, the county with the budgets and hiring and stuff. So my, my background, my bachelor's degree in undergrad is Human Resources Management. As well, that's, that's my professional background as well, I've just been doing that for about six years now. It makes sense, I want to do my part and use what I, use my existing skill sets to kind of make a difference in the county.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions?
What's your understanding of what the staff does? I mean, emergency services, it's a different ballgame than a traditional office job.
No, of course, of course, and I have done that, I've performed human resources functions when I was in the community, different things like that. My understanding of the ESA is that it is for the emergency services, meaning our firefighters, our ambulance workers and various workers like that. Is that kind of what you were asking or?
You've answered the question, and I'm just going to do a follow-up entry. You understand you'll be a board member.
Yes, ma'am.
You're not managing the employees yourself.
Right.
You, you work within the framework of the board.
Right, yeah, I spoke with the, I spoke with the director yesterday, actually, great guy. We spoke for a good hour, he explained to me, you know, what they're doing, how they answer to this, this board.
Yeah, the hierarchy and all that stuff, okay, thank you.
Hey, does anybody else have any further questions? Thank you, sir. And then next we have, is Tony Troxell, and I believe he is not going to be here with us today, he's not on here.
He's not, he's working, he couldn't.
Okay, good deal, all right, so just so I'm clear, we have about two, three-year, both of these start at the same time and at the same time?
Yes, Tony's is actually a reappointment to the board, do you want to?
No, that's fine, it is, I know he's on the board now, I've always heard great things about Tony, so I'll just, I'll go ahead and open this up for nominations.
Okay, I'm going to nominate Jacob Harris for Polancus representative seat ending to the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency Board, two, three-year terms, or a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I'm going to go ahead and throw it in there, yeah. And then I'm going to nominate for reappointment Anthony Troxell to the Jefferson County Emergency Services Agency Board for a three-year term, citizen representative, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, if there are no objections, I'll close nominations.
I would just like to make one point before we do. I had worked with Mr. Troxell on the ESA board and that sounded very effective, member showed up, you know, everybody has an absence every now and then, but he attended the meetings and participated, which is very important.
Good deal, thank you. All right, so we have, we have the two openings, two nominations, all in favor of Anthony Troxell and Jacob Harris serving on the Emergency Services Board as citizen representatives, terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries your answer, thank you, all right.
Just for a quick, Mr. Harris, you'll have to go see the county court, you'll have to be sworn in before the first meeting that you attend. Thank you.
All right.
Good luck, welcome aboard.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and jump on, jump over to the Jefferson County Board of Health. We have one unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and one five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. So I am clear, June, one in twenty twenty-five is the, would be the vacant seat that Mr. Brezlin is resigning, sorry.
No, that's my question too.
Yeah, and the right set.
Hold on a second, I'm not sure if that is. Yes, it would be for the, it would be.
If they said one in twenty twenty-five, here's the seat that Mr. Brezlin is, is resigning, and his resignation would be effective July.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, okay, so, okay. July thirty-first, okay, all right, just want to make a clarification. All right, so we have, we have three, we have three applicants, I see, I believe one on the line, the two, two on here, I will start with our two lot applicants. Mr. Alex, you want to come to the seat? I was just going to ask you, why do you want to serve on the Jefferson County Board of Health?
Well, I, I have a passion for serving this county, and I have on the board of the ESA the last, I've served two terms. The last time I served was the chair of the board, and my tenure ends, ended yesterday. And I think there's some skills and some of the things I've learned from my experience there that I could bring up to the board.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Salt?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what interests you about the Board of Health?
Well, I'm concerned about standards, and that's what I pursued my tenure on the board of the ESA. And maintaining standards for the community in terms of health and safety is a great concern.
Okay, can you give me a, any more specific reasonable of the standards you're talking about? I mean, like, I'm not quite sure, I'm not a board member, so I'm not even weighed on that, so I don't.
Well, one of the things that the board oversees, for example, is making sure that you establish standards for people who serve food in the county.
Oh, okay, all right, certifications and all that, okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Does anybody else have any further questions? Thank you, sir. Look, I'm prepared, Jerry Franklin up? Thank you for joining us today, I was just going to ask some questions, is, and why do you want to serve on the Jefferson County Board of Health, sir?
Maybe you guys had a chance to look over my resume, so I worked thirty-five years at Loudoun County Public Health. So I was there the whole time, Loudoun kind of went through the growth phase, I went from, when it was basically just. I went from, when it was basically just the state agency, the state employees and pretty underfunded to be well-funded and well taken care of. The reason the county funded Loudoun County Health Department so well is because we built trust over the years and I worked at the supervisor and ended up being supervisor who was in charge of maintaining onsite sewage systems. And so I did soil evaluations, I did inspections, I basically the whole water and wastewater world in Loudoun County, very familiar with from every side and wrote regulations, the, for the county, revised their food handling regulations, food regulations, onsite food regulations and wrote codes for the state of Virginia to change things there to enable us to run it better. It seemed like I spent about four to my time fighting with the state and the competence and region. Incredible. But I, that role is coming into Jefferson.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, being a supervisor there, I sat in meetings and got it, so I was right next to the guy who did, was in charge of the restaurants, the restaurant side, so I just heard, you know, constantly, you know, what's going on there and saw where that, you know, I didn't work in the restaurant side and the pool side, they did pool inspections and then the medical side, you know, we were separate from facilities, but, you know, I was aware of what was going on there also. But my real heart is with the sewage inspections that decided, to me, we're building infrastructure, we're building, it's, it's like you're building a sewer plant, except they're scattered all over the place. And you, you gotta have, you know, the right, the right location for these things, you've gotta have the right components in it, you've gotta have the right design and you've gotta maintain it, you can't just put them out there and be what they are. And we discovered over there that some tanks are leaking. There, I mean, we, we would go back often, it's like, why is this tank only half full? Which is kind of being cracked down inside. And we found that we were giving sub-scented tanks in, from Hurlestown County. And so we had to write it, and that, you know, if you, we'd say your tank, it doesn't even make it to the drain field. You're just wasting your time. And looking at West Virginia's regs, which I just got certified as an installer, I just passed a test, hundred percent yesterday, and then, their, their tanks, I don't think are adequate. I know we've got tanks in the area, they're in Winchester, but now good tanks, I like them. Martinsburg Company, the sort of type of tanks there. But, you know, just, just making sure that whole process is there, we've got to do something with staff retention and health department, they're just, they're coming over way too quick. And I, I would like to see the health department build trust, which takes a long time, with the community and with this board, you know, so that, so it is a trusted and valued part of the community.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any further questions for Mr. Franklin? You did a good job.
I have a question. Susan, if you're appointed to this board, I'm afraid you're running into the same situation where you've had in Loudoun with Richmond and here with Charles. We're a different breed, I mean, we're very similar in that respect, running through some of the same issues and we feed against it all the time since we're dealt with Dylan Moore's state as part of it. And then also, you said you were an installer and if you're appointed to the board, that could be a conflict for you to pursue installing services, because I mean, you can't be overseeing the staff that specs it and then do the job.
Yeah, it could, it's not working Jefferson.
Right.
I have a current job I could potentially be using and not work again.
Yeah.
But I think most of my work is gonna be in Virginia.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make you aware.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Does anybody have anything else? Here none, thank you, sir. All right, and our, our next applicant for the Board of Health is online. And that's Mrs. Karen, there she is. Karen Chapman, hi, how are you?
Good morning.
Morning. I just go ahead and ask the same question I asked the last two applicants, why do you want to be on the Jefferson County Board of Health?
Thanks, you know, again, it's, I think, sort of like Elliot mentioned, the fact that I have an interest in obviously continuing to serve my community, I have done so over the past several years and, you know, this is another way to do that. I think also just my professional skills and background are something that I think can be an asset to the board, particularly in that intersection between, you know, us being a quasi-local agency as well as quasi-state agency, as you all were talking about earlier in the meeting, and bridging those relationships and having that background and bridging those relationships and being able to work both at the local, at the state level and, and sort of offering the abilities that I have and the relationships that I have to navigate between both, obviously, local and state.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Chad?
I was gonna say, Jane's gotta ask.
Enjoy being in person, you know, even if some of the folks are, you know. So I'm gonna ask you a question, Karen.
All right.
You know, the health department's got a broad range of services and duties. Is there one particular part of it that interests you, the medical, the environmental? I, I don't know, what, what interests you?
Sure, I mean, I, I think there's sort of two pieces there for me. One is just some of my policy background in health policy and public health policy. So I think that, I have that background and that sort of interest area, so I'm kind of a bit of a policy nerd, if you will. But on the other side of it, as I do, I have a lot of background, a lot of experience in boards and dealing with budgets, dealing with complicated budgets, dealing in budgets where we have to be careful with money. And so I think that's also something where my interest lies and, you know, kind of, my focus is always the fact that in any capacity that you serve in the community, you know, our constituency or the taxpayers, that's who we're responsible to. And so that's also my area of focus for the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Chad? All right. Here none, I will open up for nominations for Danny.
Before that, I have a question for maybe Nate or Stephanie. Is there district and partisan requirements for the Board of Health?
There are, yes.
Yeah. So does everyone need those requirements? No one else could differentiate which, who gets what seat?
Yeah, you're right, that is one.
I believe that they do, but let me check what Jessica, she's the one who does that. Yeah, so there, you can't have more than two or?
Yeah, I think it's a party.
Yeah. That's correct, yeah. Or not, unless they're two parties, unless they're independent or some other branch. But you can't have more than?
But I was thinking it was district too, because they had, they had trouble finding a Republican from Shepherstone.
Yeah, that would be a tough thing. That's right.
I'm looking at, except my browser shows this one.
So do we? So I know Mr. Breland, Mr. Brezlin, I know. I know we have room for at least one. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'll go ahead and, and open the board for nominations.
I would like to nominate Karen Bailey Chapman for the term ending, the five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll vote in a second. What is nominated right now? All right, Karen, for June, ending twenty-six. And is there any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Elliot Simon for the one unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, to be effective immediately following Mr. Brezlin's resignation on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Very good, all right. Is there any other nominations?
I, I'd like to nominate Joe Franklin for either one of the slots. Can't, wasn't quite sure who got what slot.
So for, for just? Yeah, Jared Franklin, yes. For either one, so, okay. All right, so what we'll do then, you're, you're nominated for either one?
Right, right.
Okay, gosh, okay. All right, so, so what we'll do then for, we'll go ahead and vote on the term, for the term, make sure I get this right, for the one, on its five-year term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, we have a nomination for, for Karen Chapman, we have a nomination for Jerry Franklin. All right, all of those, all of those in favor for Karen Chapman, say aye. All for Jerry?
Yeah.
Karen's four to one, okay? And for the term ending and on June, starting, excuse me, starting on June thirty-first this year and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, this is the vacant, the vacant seat by Mr. Brezlin, we have two candidates nominated, we have Mr. Jerry Franklin and Mr. Elliot Simon. All is for Elliot Simon, say aye.
Aye.
All is for Jerry Franklin's, say.
Aye.
Motion carries, excuse me, sorry. Elliot gets the seat four to one and, and Karen, Karen has, Karen has the term ending twenty twenty-six and Elliot Australia has the term ending in twenty twenty-five. Thanks to all for your good, and your time.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are, I missed my platform again. We took care of a couple of those and well, I will move, how about we move to Parks and Rec? Now, this one, does, does all their board members, it seems like they expire at the same time, is that right? It seems like we have a lot of them. We have one unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty-two, one expired term ending June twenty twenty-three and four three-year terms ending in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Yeah, how many people are on the park board? Nine, okay. All right. Is it nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess it must have had a few people.
I know one of them.
Oh, okay, okay. Do we have anybody that's here in person to interview? All right, why don't you come on down? You got here early.
I didn't want to help in now. I didn't realize that was allowed, so now I do.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're ready.
So we have three options, right? That's it, Virginia, even if you have.
And I, I know, I do know that Tony, you know, cannot be here for, for an interview for she's a current set seat. So why don't we go ahead and start with you, you're here, well, thank you for coming and if you want to, I'm, I'm, I'm flipping through all my papers, can you introduce yourself?
I'm Jordan Anna Baker.
Okay, Ms. Baker, all right. Why do you want to serve on the Jefferson County Parks and Rec?
Heard there was a need and I love the outdoors, I love Parks and Rec, so I thought that's a thing.
Sounds like, sounds like a good answer. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Baker?
I'm just wondering, do you have ideas where you see improvements or things or what's your goal, maybe if you're a park and rec board and you want to steer things?
My goal is to sit back and evaluate to see how things run first and get a lay of the land and then see where I can help out, see what needs tweaking, see what, where I can help, since I really don't know how the board operates. Can't really tell you yet.
Well, no, I, I understand that. I guess maybe I should have asked other questions. Do you see a particular need right now or gap in our parks and facilities that you would like to see improved or?
I see things that happen that I sit there and I wonder why one thing gets done and something else doesn't get done, so yes.
Thanks.
All right, does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Baker? Here none, well, thank you, that was easy. We have another applicant, Ms. Susan Benzinger, is she online? Hey, Susan, how are you, Susan? We can't hear you, we see you talking.
You hear me now?
Well, good morning and I'm just gonna ask the first question, probably the easiest question, is why do you want to be on the Jefferson County Parks and Rec submission?
Well, I, when we moved to Jefferson County, we love it and we, we feel like one of the reasons it's such a great place to live is all the parks and the recreation programs. And I have participated in community service type things before and I would just like to continue that and I thought Parks and Recs would be a good place to do that.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any further questions for Ms. Susan?
Yes, Susan, if you don't mind, I ask the same question, do you see a need or gap in services in our Parks and Rec facilities now or do you have a particular level, area of interest in Parks and Rec?
I don't, I haven't been to every park or to every program, so I don't know if there's any gaps, I haven't really spent time looking for gaps. I just think it's important to keep the rec programs going and to do a lot of things for the kids. And that's really, I just need to see, I don't really, you know, I haven't sat in on meetings and stuff, so I'm not quite sure exactly what I would be doing.
Right, no, I understand, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, well, here none, well, thank you so much and thank you for wanting and you have an interest to serve with all of us, first of all, the Parks and Rec. We have four three-year terms ending in twenty twenty-four, which is the longest terms to be filled. I would like to go ahead and nominate Mrs. Baker, Ms. Millburn and Ms. Benzinger to the three-year term ending in twenty twenty-four. All our candidates, so we'll close nominations.
Just making a mention, just making a mention.
Okay, motion to, to accept Ms. Baker, Ms. Millburn, Ms. Benzinger to, to the three-year term ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, do I have said? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, you answer. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for your interest. Thank you.
That was an easy one. And so next we have the South Jefferson Library Committee. We have one applicant for that and I think there was two letters of support for this candidate, right?
Yes.
Oh, there you are. If you want to introduce yourself and I'll just ask you the same question I've asked the last couple candidates and why do you want to serve on Jefferson County Library Committee?
Hello, everybody, thanks for having me. My name is Jeff Cook. I've actually served on the, the board for the past three years, my term expired and I, I'd like to continue serving. It's been quite fulfilling for me the past three years, seeing some of the decisions we made as a board impact the local community in terms of programs that the library offers to the community of Summit Point, but also during the pandemic this past year, the library served as a hotspot for those that did not have access to high-speed internet and for the, their education, for some of those elementary school and high school students. So that was quite rewarding. We are also undergoing an expansion that involves a lot of collaboration with board members and our site engineer and I'd like to see that project through. I think I have a lot to offer from that perspective. Not only, I'm, in my day job, I'm an analyst, so I, I work well with numbers and I like that type of thing, but I'm also interested in technology and, and our libraries are consistently upgrading their technology and evolving with the times. Everybody used to go to the library for a book, now I'd say we're gonna go for a mixed media, so it's, it's been, been fun the past three years and I'd just like to continue that journey.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any further questions? Hearing none? I'll go, I'll go. Go ahead, Miss Dan.
Mr. Cook, you've been a, a board member and you've got a lot of level of support here from your fellow board members and so forth, and I know that, that library does a lot on a very small location. You said something about they're working on an expansion, could you explain that to me?
Yeah, so over the previous decade or so. Yeah, so over the previous decade or so, we've, the library has saved a lot of money to work toward this expansion. Because right now, we're consistently having to recycle books through, throughout their lifetime. And we just don't have room for books anymore. We are a, I would say, non-traditional library in the sense that we're not the, the library isn't the type of librarian that shushes everybody when they come through. We support activities and we support people having fun within the library. And right now, there is not a lot of community space. We have, we have outdoor activities as well that we'd like to offer. And we don't have sort of a patio to offer that or any real dedicated space for that as well. And as the southern portion of the county continues to grow, that library becomes incremental or instrumental, right? Instrumental in offering services to the families that move into there. So we're really looking forward to the future there with that.
Well, you said expansion. I was thinking it can be a physical expansion, but by my recollection, that's a very small lot. I helped move the books into the new library with Commissioner Cooper. So that was basically my question. Are you going to more mobile services or expansion at the site or?
Yeah, it's going to be expansion at the site. We have a site engineer, JJ Companies. And we're working through, we have an architect, Lynn Welsh. And the expansion will be, if you're familiar where the parking lot is, it's going to be expanded out that way toward the church. And we've been in contact with the church and we talked through where the new parking lot will be and all of that. So, so yeah. Is that good?
No, no, that's, that's, that's a good explanation. I'm just glad to know what their plans are.
All right, does anybody else have any further questions? All right, hearing none, I'd like to go ahead and nominate Mr. Cooper and I'd like to move the motion to accept him to the board of the South Jefferson Library Committee for a term of, it's a five-year term in June 30th, 2026. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, you may answer. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
All right. Is Jeff on? All right, here he is. Just a moment, come on up, sir. Morning. Morning. We're going to move to gen nine number seven. Director of Communications, request approval of a promotion to Supervising Public Safety Dispatch. Go ahead, Sarah, the floor to yours.
Thank you very much. We have a supervisor that is retiring 32 years.
What's your name?
Lynn Castello. So actually, the retirement party is today. We're holding it at the Emergency Communications Center. You do get a chance between 10:00 and 2:00 today. I'm not sure, I know your agenda's pretty full here, but they're holding her a little party out there to celebrate many years of service. So with our retirement, we have one supervisor opening from our original supervisor's testing process. One eligible candidate remained on the list from that assessment. Mr. Richard Hahn, formerly RJ Mont. He is, he has passed the assessment center. He accepted my offer from June 23rd. He has been with, he has been a public safety dispatcher for over five years now. Previous to that, he was a public safety dispatcher at Clark County. So he has many years. He already has APOC supervisor courses. He's one of our trainers. He's our primary fire dispatch trainer and runs the academy. He has a lot of expertise in fire dispatching and his background is fire. He is a, I don't know if he's an officer independent or not. He may be a lieutenant, but I'm not sure. So don't, please don't.
He's been in leadership position there. I can't tell you what it is.
He is also one of my certified radio programmers. Doesn't do as much programming as Brooke, but want to, you know, get him more up to speed on that. He, I intend to assign him to fill the supervisor vacancy on day shift. He's for bullet number five, afford wage increase commensurate to the greatest step of supervising dispatcher. It is increased in actual savings to the 712 budget due to the difference in the retiring supervisor. It is greater than 10% that provided for commission policy. And like the last supervisor fund requires a commission to approve above the 10%. So the motion is in front of me.
What's the current salary?
Current?
Are you asking for the salary? He's going to be, he's.
No, it's on here. I was just wondering what it is, what the current salary is taking them from one to the other instead of just the 10%.
Sure.
Just a note.
Yeah, it is above 10%. And it typically, they are for our, I'll get you the salary here.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that in.
It's years, 52,867.
That's the salary that.
It will be, I guess, right? Is that what you're saying at the beginning? So I just wanted to, what we're shifting.
I have it right in front of me here in the document.
22,100.
Thank you. I was going to say 23,000.
42,100, what?
22,100.
Okay.
All right.
Great.
Good evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the promotional appointment of Mr. Richard Hahn Jr. from Public Safety Dispatcher to Supervising Public Safety Dispatcher, approving a wage increase greater than 10% by policy, going from at the grade as staff of Supervising Public Safety Dispatcher within the Emergency Services Communications Center, taking the salary from 42,127 to $52,867.57.
I'll second that.
And just so we can add an effective date, I assume today?
It will be effective the first day of the pay period, next pay period, which will be July 4th. I didn't want to mess with finances.
Yeah, okay.
Which is Sunday.
Yeah.
All right. Then there's a motion that's been moved properly second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries, you may answer.
Thank you very much.
All right.
If we get done, I'll try to stop by.
Please do.
Did you say until 2:00?
Till 2:00 PM, yes, so.
She's such a public person.
She is.
Yeah.
So she's probably, as of today, the longest-serving employee at the county right now. At 32 years, I would think.
Yeah, Sandy. Yeah.
Sandy. Okay. So then second, probably second longest. But she is retiring, going full-time with the Emergency Services Safety.
Yeah. Through it all, through the very small E911 centers to the roof leak and the collapse and all that stuff.
She started, yeah, she started July 1st, 19, well, she started part-time October of 1989, full-time July 1st, 1990.
Whenever I hear, you know, Sandy had the radio. That's just her and it's always, it's always lit. So she's, you know, she just sounds really.
Senior supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We are running two minutes head schedule for public comment. We'll see if anybody's on there. And then if they're not, we'll wait until exactly 10:50 and check again.
If anybody does want to make a public comment, you can send me a message or you can use the ratio hit icon to let me know if you want to make a public comment and I will unmute you to allow you to make. Most of our people about being and there are people who are not employees. Yeah, Sandy had said that Ellen Finn had called in to make a public comment or that she said that she wanted to be public comment, but I don't think her.
She's not on yet, okay. We have, well, we'll wait like 30 seconds. It's almost 10 there. We have 30 more seconds and it's not open.
Well, and my watch says 10:37.
Okay. Mine's 10:49.
Yeah. Well, this is a, so, you know, who knows? World's turning faster one from the other.
Exactly. What's the total number of, eight, one, one?
We have 26 attendees, so that will be our audience. And right now, we have eight panelists. The panelists are the people who can more freely interact with the commissioners and appointers. That is a panelist ID.
Oh, wow. Well, according to my watch, we have 10:51. This is my cell phone and my computer says the same thing. So we'll move on. If for some reason you have somebody who is getting turned on late, we'll jump back. And that's certainly not a problem. All right. So we're going to move on to Nathan. Nathan, can you tell us what numbers you want to go in and talk about? And I'm sure the executive session.
Yeah. On number one, I just have a real brief point. And number three, I have a real brief point. And I guess number two as well.
All right, what is the hugest at all? It's all about, all we love.
That'd be too few words for a deter.
Yeah.
You can't hate by the word. I know, but I'm telling you.
All right.
And I need an executive session too.
Yes, I was going to make that too. This discussion, county complex and executive session as well to the project. All right.
Then that would be for the purpose of receiving legal advice and also for the purpose of potentially discussing contract and energy or security. Exactly.
All right, so I'll go ahead and move to go into the executive session to discuss Nathan's agenda items, one, two, three. And also, do y'all want to spell those out? And also discuss under the county administration board, discussion of county complex project. About second.
Second, well, we need to add to the motion to go in the executive session, the reason why. Receive legal counsel.
And to discuss potential property contract.
Contract and security issues.
Okay, so we're going to go into the executive session to receive legal advice and discuss contract, potential contracts. All right. All right, thank you. So we have a second, all in favor, say aye. All right, it's 10:53. All right, it's ten fifty-three.
All right, welcome back. We move back to come out and take a session.
All right.
Second on paper job.
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Yes, Commissioner Salper, I just wanted to report to you, as you know, you at the commission authorized hiring a consultant to look into how to best with the citizens of accounting with ambulance and emergency services. We just report to you that Ms. Grove and Ms. Gordon and I met with the consultant yesterday, and the consultant seems very knowledgeable, and he's beginning to collect information to develop.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have anything else coming out of this session?
Yes, pertaining to county administrative reports, county complex projects. I would like to make a motion, can the administrator move forward, extorting locations for county complexes?
I'll second that. Any discussion? On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you. I did promise to come back, see if there's anybody that maybe didn't get on at 10:50 or public comment, we'll give those one last try. And... anybody that maybe didn't get on 10:50 to comment. We'll give that one last try, and we'll give Seth in a second to look.
If there's anybody who wants to make a comment, you can use the radio phone. There's a message.
None. All right, here none. If there are no objections, we adjourn. Y'all have a happy and safe quarter. Thank you.